To order, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
First by Troy, second. Second by Stephen, all those in favor? And that passes seven to zero. This time, if you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. First by Stephen, second by Rick, all those in favor? And that passes seven to zero. Next up, Dr. Tomlinson, recognition.
I'm pleased the board would like to recognize this month's classified employee of the month. She wasn't able to be in attendance tonight, but we still wanted to recognize all of the great work that she's been doing. From Cornerstone Elementary, it's Cassie Hsu. Cornerstone Elementary, we'd like to recognize Cassie for her outstanding service. She shows up each and every day with a smile on her face, ready to assist our students and staff with any needs that arise. She goes above and beyond her care that she provides. Throughout the last year, Cassie has been diligent in documentation and communication of COVID-19 protocols, has worked hard in keeping our staff and students at Cornerstone safe and healthy. We appreciate the time, effort, and diligence that she brings to our team during these difficult times, and they want to recognize her for all the great work she had and want to bring that to your guys' attention tonight.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next up, MSBA report. Darren.
And a little time to drink.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Board Association's Board Report for the month of February. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at what's known as competency-based education, the idea that students should advance in their education based on their mastery of skills and expectations, not based on seat time. A new statewide group called the Success Ready Students Work Group is studying the issue here in Missouri. That group is made up of educators, school board members, administrators, parents, and other stakeholders. One of the facilitators of the group is Dr. Pam Hedgepath, and she tells us competency-based learning meets the individual needs of students.
So competency-based learning is really centered on student learning, and it is an ongoing process of having really clear learning targets, and then students and teachers and parents using assessment tools to really identify where the student learning is. And then where student learning is, then designing instructional practices that really meet the individual needs of students. It's highly motivating for students. It keeps parents and teachers and students very informed on where the current learning level is so that the learning can be scaffold and supported to really meet the individual needs of students.
Another facilitator for the project is Dr. Mike Fulton. He tells us the goal of the group is to develop a framework for the use of competency-based learning in Missouri.
As part of that framework, redesign the current state assessment system, including the math test, to better support students, educators, and informed parents on where their child is on their learning continuum and support them in their growth toward being college, career, and workplace-ready. We also are going to have a component of this work that will speak to the need for flexibility by school districts who want to innovate in this space of competency-based learning and assessment.
The Success Ready Students Work Group will be holding a series of meetings during the coming weeks with the goal of having a framework developed by early May. We will be keeping you informed about this group's progress. Teacher recruitment and retention continues to be a major issue throughout Missouri. School districts were facing a teacher shortage prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, and it has only worsened during the past two years. The minimum starting teacher salary in Missouri is $25,000 right now, the lowest in the nation. Governor Mike Parson proposed raising that minimum to $38,000 during his recent State of the State address to the General Assembly.
Unfortunately, Missouri is currently ranked 50th in the United States for starting teacher pay, and half of our new teachers leave the profession by their fifth year. This is unacceptable, and we must do better. That's why we are proposing to raise teacher pay in every corner of this state.
Under Governor Parson's proposal, the state would fund 70% of the cost of raising the minimum teacher salary to $38,000, and local school districts would be responsible for 30% of the cost. There are many other issues being considered in the current session of the General Assembly that are of great concern to MSBA and school board members throughout the state, including the expansion of charter schools, making school board elections partisan, and moving school board elections to the November election date. As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on developments again this year through our Legislative Voice newsletter sent to members via email each Friday during the session, our Twitter feed with up-to-the-minute developments through critical issue alerts, and periodic webinars. We urge you to stay in contact with your legislators during the session and communicate to them the impact legislation will have on your school district. And don't forget, this year's MSBA Legislative Forum is scheduled for March 7 in Jefferson City. Check the MSBA website for registration information. MSBA also is pleased to once again sponsor School Board Recognition Week in Missouri, March 6 through 12 this year, as proclaimed by Governor Parson. It's a great opportunity for school districts and communities to recognize the work of school board members and the important role local boards of education play as leaders of our public schools. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
All right, we have no visitors tonight, so next up, superintendent's report.
All right, I'm going to spend a little time with you on legislation. As you saw in the video, their session is open. There's over 500 education bills out there, and a lot of times, they're not good. So I will start with the supplemental budget bill. That's the SIR III money. That was voted out of the House, so now it goes on to the Senate. So hopefully, they stay on track with that. It's got to be to us by the 24th before the money just gets sent to other states. It doesn't go back to the federal government. It just gets redistributed out. So I hope we don't lose $2 billion in the state of Missouri.
You say March 24?
Mm-hmm. That's coming quick.
Yeah.
So there's a House Bill 1814. It's on open enrollment. There was thought that it would have been passed out of committee on Tuesday. It was not. It's been postponed. That doesn't mean it's dead. It just means it hasn't been moved on right now. There was some concern that MSBA supported that bill. They have since sent an email indicating that they did not, but they had submitted written testimony in favor of it. But they clearly have, if they're ever going to support open enrollment, there's five key aspects that must be in place. This bill does not have those five key aspects in place, so I can't see why they would support it. But again, I got an email today from MSBA saying there must be some confusion. So anyway, that's been postponed for now. Virtual instruction expansion, this is House Bill 1903 and Senate Bill 648. They're identical bills. The House bill was postponed, but the Senate bill was voted out, so that means it could be voted on at any time. And what virtual instruction expansion is, those who would oppose it or have concerns with it, it's mocap, that online learning program. Currently, the school district uses mocap. Many, most do. But we have some say in what the instruction programming might be for our kids, right? Just like we have some say in what the instruction programming for our kids would be if they're in our classroom. The new bill would eliminate that. It would allow, you know, people to sign up and sign up for whatever they want, however long they want, and of course, we just have to pay for it. And so there, you know, one of the biggest concerns there is if the school district's not involved with that, I feel like some companies might take advantage of parents and lure them into making a decision on something like that, and it's not in their best interest, not in the best interest of the child.
Kind of like those online colleges did with just...
Exactly. So, you know, that, for me, that's one of the biggest concerns. But it, I mean, even talks about, you can't even dispute the pay, you know, like sometimes... Yeah, and they get it wrong a lot, don't they, Dr. Miller?
They do.
And so we'd end up having to send money to them, even if they might have to send it back to us later, which really, if you're a customer, it shouldn't work like that. But that's a, that's a big concern there, but it's, it's got legs. The Parents Bill Rights, House Bill 1995, House Bill 1474, and House Joint Resolution 110, those have all been postponed as well. Doug Ritchie is a sponsor of 1995, local representative of ours. And so I'm not going to get too deep into it right now because, again, it's postponed. Again, that does not mean the bill won't continue to move. It just means they're not doing anything with it right now. So I'll keep you posted on that should it move forward. November's school board elections, House Bill 2306 is also postponed. You know, the concerns with that are the cooling effect that that would have on board candidates, because all of a sudden, you're competing with, you know, state and national elections. You're going to have to have money to advertise and all these sorts of things. So I think it would take a lot of people out of the running, you know, to become candidates. And I don't know how you can get seven people to sign up for a free job for three years as it is. Can you imagine what that might look like? So there's concerns with that right now. It's been postponed. Superintendent consolidation bill, House Bill 1721, this would allow school districts to voluntarily get together and say, can we share a superintendent? And if they do, the state would pay them money. The bill, in its current form, unfortunately, is written in that you would get paid if the money is appropriated. So you might, we might get together and say, hey, let's share a superintendent, and they might pay us year one, and be like, oh, we didn't appropriate it. And then here we are in that situation now. So if they clean that up, that could be good for small school districts. But right now, the way it's written, it's not ideal. So school board sub-districts, House Bill 1804, this would allow for the, instead of the at-large type board member system that we have experienced here, you might see in Kansas City where they have a mixture of at-large and district board members. But anyway, this would allow, if the voter base here wanted to change that, to district everybody into small districts. Again, this, the concern here, for those who oppose it, has to do with the cooling effect that I mentioned earlier about moving into November elections. Not everybody lives in the right place, for example, to, to make it nice and even. You could have two good candidates in one district, and both of them wouldn't be able to be successful board members because of being districted. And again, it's hard enough to find people who want to do this and want to do a good job at this, and so I would, I would describe it as that cooling effect in reducing potentially good candidates' viability to be on a school board. School board member recall. I've added this. This was not on your list earlier, but this surprised me. It got through. House Bill 1747 has been voted out of both the House and the Senate. This would allow recall if, you know, 10% of the, it was previously 25%, now down to 10% of the voters in the last school board election would like to do so. And so I, I expect this one to continue to be moving along. One of the main concerns about it, even if you take about the recall, let's say there is a terrible board member, and hey, the recall helped with that. This bill also introduces what many consider personal liability to board members with regard to decision-making within the district. Again, you come here, you do this for free. People don't call you to tell you you're doing a great job. They usually call you when, when they have some concerns about something, so it's not like you're getting pats on the back and being thanked all the time. Well, I guess once, one week a year, they hear of March. But then to move into now having some concerns with personal liability in the decisions you make in this job. So, so it's not supported by MSBA and other groups because of that concern. House Bill 1585, this is Responsible Social Media Curriculum. There's nothing wrong with Responsible Social Media Curriculum. I think a lot of people are irresponsible with social media, so I don't think anybody's against that, but this was voted out of the House, so it could be voted on at any time. The concern with it is, is the, the local control that boards should have. You know, it requires the district to adopt a curriculum when it's, you know, curriculum determinations are best made by the local school board. So that, that is a concern. The bill's ambiguous and subjective in its, its writing, like what would it look like? And then as we've worked through this, we've even discovered there would be quite a bit of needed training to implement the curriculum, which might be expensive. There's no allocation for, you know, for taking care of those costs. You call it an unfunded mandate, if you will. So there's a lot going on. Those are the ones that are most pertinent to our school district, so I'll keep you posted as this stuff moves through. Any questions?
With the social media thing, would they be on better footing if they required a course like they did with Personal Finance a few years ago or something like that? Like, and you could put it wherever you wanted it, or...
I would think so, because, you know, again, you know, that's what this board's for, local controlled decision-making. What's the best curriculum for Excelsior Springs may not be the best curriculum for, you know, another district neighboring us. So, you know, you, you represent the stakeholders of this community. You make decisions that they would expect you to make, right? And so to put something in place that might have concerns by some of the families here.
Have they ever required specific curriculum for a course that's already approved before that you can remember?
Not that I recall, no.
I don't think that's ever happened before.
Right. So, yeah, whether it's government or whatever, you have the latitude to determine.
Yeah, they create the course, and you create the curriculum.
But just, you know, there's the enrollment numbers. They're similar to this time next year. Obviously, you know, job corps is a lot lower than it used to be.
Any news on that, boss?
The, the number I'm hearing by end of year is about 50 total kids.
So no.
Back when you, this district used to have 350-plus. So with mocap, the virtual stuff I had mentioned earlier, I doubt this will ever see those numbers again.
All right. Any questions on either of those questions, concerns? Next up is discussion items. First up is Dr. Gross with Teacher Staff Well-Being Survey.
Okay. Well, forgive me, I don't have a great voice tonight, but I'll do, I'll do my best to get through this. In November, the Student Services Department issued a survey to all teachers and staff. We were very excited about our response rate. We had a 93.7% response rate. And really, the nature of the past couple of school years, everything we've been going through, also the implementation of our CSEP and some of the goals that we have there were the catalyst for us to put out this survey. And the results have really proven, you know, what we, we already know about what's happening with, with our staff, and the physical pandemic we've been going through really is, is producing kind of an alternative pandemic of, you know, even more burnout and stress, and those things are really heightened with everything that the teachers and staff have been going through, and that, and the results really proved that out. The survey was focused on well-being and sense of belonging. And so the following proposal that we have here is with FuelEd. That's an educational partner. Through another partner, we already have Panorama, which is what we do our surveying through. And what we have is an opportunity to begin to really support our teachers and staff, and what I would like to do is begin this in the summer of 2022 with our leadership, with our admin team, and then move that into the fall with the rest of our staff, all certificated and classified staff, and be able to support them and really extend that work through future years as we continue with our survey results and meeting that CSEP goal of collaborative climate and culture. Another little extension of this is Dr. Tomlinson had been working on securing a teacher retention grant. You heard a little bit about teacher retention in the, the board report that we listened to tonight from MSBA. He was able to secure, the number's actually been updated from what you guys got. We thought it was going to be 90,000, but he was able to secure 114,500 that we'll be able to utilize to implement FuelEd, and we're very excited about what that will do. So just a little, little blurb on what that will do, but investing in FuelEd will improve the emotional well-being of Excelsior Springs educators, giving them another tool in their tool bags to manage the stress and cope with primary and secondary trauma and build towards a culture of communal support. So it'll really help, help us to be able to, to meet that CSEP goal that we're working towards. So I would recommend that the board would approve the teacher-staff well-being proposal to be implemented in the 22, 23 school year, and it will be funded with a teacher-retention grant this coming year, and then in subsequent years, we'll use the Clay County Children's Fund to continue to fund that work.
And what's it cost a year?
This first year, it's going to, is going to be the heavy year, so it's going to be about $90,000 this first year. And then from then on, as we do the sustaining, it's going to be between $5,000 to $10,000, and then that will just taper off as we go into future years. And of course, we'll want to train, you know, future staff as well, be able to support them.
All right.
So moved.
First by Kalen, second by Rick. All those in favor? And that passes seven to zero. Thank you, Dr. Gross. And you're still up with your voice, so...
I am, I'm still up. Okay, the next thing I would like to talk to the board about a little bit tonight is currently, we have one separate special education placement at our elementary level, and that's our functional classrooms that we have at Cornerstone, formerly known as RISE. You guys might think of them as known as RISE. And rather than this classroom remaining exclusive to students with the functional programming, what has tended to happen is when we have some students that we're really trying to figure out exactly how to service them, and we know it's going to be unique and not be, you know, what we would do in a special education resource room, what has tended to happen is we look to that functional classroom, be able to support those kids. And that classroom has, has honestly become a little bit saturated. It's not streamlined into functional programming like we would want it to do, to be able to support those kids the best way possible. So what I would like to do is now open an autism classroom to be able to support autism students that are more severe, more specifically. And so we have a couple of students already in the functional classroom that we're trying to service, but with our functional programming, it's just not appropriate. And so to be able to service them more appropriately with this alternative room and have another separate placement where we can support kids and really meet their needs the way we should be meeting them. And so what you see in front of you is really those two rooms categorized out, so you can see how we would meet those needs and how they look different from one another. And so what I would recommend is that the board approve the addition of an autism room. I'm thinking at either Lewis or Elkhorn. We haven't made that decision yet, and I don't think that needs to be made right at this moment, but to support students with specific needs for specialized instruction and a placement within the district. And this would also require us hiring a teacher and a paraprofessional, and they would need to be trained in, you know, autism instruction and support. And we would be using special education state funds to be able to support that.
Now, what would you do like at the middle school and the high school levels?
We are not ready to open a room. We do have functional classrooms at the middle school and high school, but we are not ready yet to open an autism room at those levels. But that is something, obviously, that we will want to consider in the future as these students move through.
Yeah. Okay.
So evaluate this as they're moving through the elementary?
Yes, absolutely.
Right. Do we have a motion to approve?
I was first and...
Oh, you moved, okay. So we have a first and a second. Any other questions for Dr. Gross?
No, I think that's an easy.
Yes.
I love it.
I think we did that at Mark Hill, and it was fantastic.
Yeah, I love it.
Just because it can be so focused on the individual needs of those kids. It's a great idea.
All those in favor? And that passes seven to zero. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, approval of FY '23 Enhancement Grant Program Improvement and Improvement Grant. Dr. Boling.
Good evening. If it pleases the board, I would like to present our fiscal year '23 Enhancer Grant and Program Improvement Grant, and then just to give you a little update on the Teaching Professions class, since this will be heavy for that class. As the MSBA shared with you, there's obviously a teacher shortage, and we got news last month that the Teaching Professions course and practicum has been approved by DESI. So we are really excited about that. Along with that, along with Dr. Tomlinson's grant he got for the teacher retention, we got a Grow Your Own Teachers grant as well. So that'll provide us $10,000 that we can put towards the training of the teacher, towards sending those kids out to universities to build those relationships, meet with those teachers, so that way we can continue to get them through the process. So we're really excited about that. The Teaching Professions, as Dr. Miller shared with you, it's either a one- or two-year course. Obviously, the longer students are in there, they get more out of it. So the students are able to graduate with a CPR and AED training. They'll graduate with a paraprofessional ticket. They'll graduate with a substitute ticket, and then also, they're able to get dual credit or articulated credit for college. A lot of that can be paid for by the state, so they're not even having to spend a cent on that dual credit. So we're really excited about that opportunity for those students. Now that DESI approved, we're looking at recruiting teachers to apply for that and also students. We're excited to get going with that. The Program Improvement Grant for the, or the Enhancement Grant is a 75-25 grant like it has been in years past. So if you look through their everything, there's obviously a startup cost of these programs. The classroom that we're putting it in is Classroom 7, and it hasn't been updated since we've done anything. It doesn't have any technology in it. So we put as many things that we can get on this grant, we're going to let DESI help support us in that because they'll cover 75% of it. There are some things that are going there that they can't cover. Usually, it's lower-cost things, and so that's why we got that $10,000 grant to help support those. So there'll be a lot going on there. But things such as laptops, all the technology that can go in there, storage units, so if you've ever been in an elementary classroom or pre-K, there's a lot of storage, like what was in here, so the grant can help cover 75% of those. So if you look through these items, estimated reimbursement, the total cost of all the things on this list is $32,797. DESI will reimburse us for $23,947.75 of that, so the total cost for the district for all of those things is only $8,849.25. So paying, you know, a quarter on the dollar to get all these brand-new things and update that classroom to train these teachers, the state-of-the-art stuff, is pretty exciting. So that's the Enhancement Grant. The Program Improvement Grant is a 50-50 grant, so some programs, depending on how they're classified in their fields of merit, you can apply for the 75-25 Enhancement Grant, or we have a 50-50 Program Improvement Grant. So last year, you guys approved replacing all the Animation Media IMAX, which was great because they were like 2013, and that's 100 years in computers. So now we're looking at replacing, I think it's eight laptops. You can take it to MacBooks because we're sending them out in the community to work on things. We send them to the community center to build things. They've built, they've built a lot of logos for the community, so we want them to be able to take that tech out and work with the community. So we're really excited about the opportunity to replace those at 50% of what the cost is. So at this time, I'll entertain any questions. If anyone has any questions over the two grants or Teaching Professions in general?
Entertain a motion to approve the Enhancement Grant and the Program Improvement Grant. First by Rick.
Second.
Second by Kalen. Any questions for Dr. Boling? Hearing none. All those in favor? And that passes seven to zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Dr. Miller, Curriculum and Instruction Overview.
Yes, so I've done this before where I just kind of give you a brief overview. Since the building principles are coming, I'd kind of like to give you a simplified version of what we've been working on. So if you look at our, at the chart there, we implemented N2 Math K5 at the elementary level. It's a new math program. And breaking down the numbers a little bit, we, I'm looking at basically three baseline tests throughout the year. It, it does a really good job of quizzing them and formatively assessing them throughout the year so teachers can make adjustments, but this is sort of like a, oh, a way for me to look to make sure that the program's actually working. So if you look at the beginning of the year, the red, that's the kids that were not ready to start at the appropriate grade level. Mid-year, you can tell that we're making gains there. We still have a lot of kids that are not where they should be. But I wanted to give a huge shout-out to our teachers. An example is, if you jump down and look at third grade, third-grade teachers started with 76% of their kids not ready for third grade. So if you think about it, they had half of, half of a year in first grade and really a chopped-up second grade, but they moved those kids... a chopped-up second grade, but they moved those kids, now 42% of them are not ready, and I'm hoping that that number is gonna get even lower by the end of, end of the year. So it's not that they, and that's where they should be at the middle of the year, so they're growing.
It's just that educational gap of losing their front row.
It is. I mean, it just, I can't say this enough, there's no replacement for a teacher in front of a kid.
Exactly.
There just isn't. And it's just further testifies to that. So first grade, 47% of the kids were not ready, now we're down to 25%. Second grade, 52% of them were not ready, and second-grade teachers, you talk about the heroes, they haven't had the, you know, a kid's kindergarten class and a first-grade class, and then they took on the second grade. I think that they were called, I think that one teacher told me they were heathens and ravenous during that first couple, like they, she didn't know what she was gonna do. They have increased, I'm so proud of the second-grade teachers for what they've done with the math program. As you guys know, I've really talked a lot about my concerns overall with the district math scores, and just looking at this, I think the program is really working well. The kids seem to really enjoy it, the teachers find it challenging, but I think that they're seeing the gains that they need to do. It's, it really is a, a healthy balance of being fun for the kids and offering the rigor that we need them to be at. So, that appears to be working, so that was a good decision on that math program so far. Onto reading, we give our second DRA test at the elementary level. We're still kind of looking at the data on that, it's a little harder to interpret, you kinda have to have a person in front of it and really looking at things, so the principals and I are working on that. I will tell you that reading has improved at first glance a lot as well. You're still dealing, dealing with those deficits, but trying to get kids caught up. I am getting ready on the next item, ready to ask for courses to be approved. As you know, my big task this year is just to get a curriculum in the hands of our teachers, so I have 70 more courses for your approval coming up. Again, completely happy with the amount of work that the teachers are doing. Our reading, to be honest, we've got math in a really good spot, our reading curriculum needs some more K5. There's some pretty big holes. Right now, the instructional coaches have given up a lot of their time to do a full curriculum audit of reading, trying to get it where it should be, so we should, I'm looking forward to seeing some gains in that as well. Just a heads up, the parent-teacher conferences are, are this week, so those will happen on Thursday, so everybody's ready for that. We, PDC wanted to do something good for teachers, like you'll hear me say, I remember in November saying, "Those are February faces in November." For anyone that's worked in education, you know that February lasts about four times longer than any other month of the year. So, one of the things that we did to get teachers through that is we offered a Take Care of Yourself Week, where we really just celebrated them and did nice things. So it went over very well with the teachers, they seemed to really like it, and I'm hoping to keep that as kind of a, kind of a tradition for PDC. Started a new tutoring program at Rockin' Tiger Club, just to kind of Phase 1, see how effective it is. Had some reading teachers and some instructional coaches get together and create the tutoring. It's associated with, according to data, what our students were lacking. K3, they're missing a lot of phonics skills, so that's what they're tutoring and working on, and then the upper grades are really missing that comprehension component. So, they're gonna be giving them assessments to make sure that those programs are working for those kids. I'm in hopes that we can actually spread that to the other buildings as well. Let's, I kinda wanted to just take a look at it and make sure that everything was, was as it should be. Final thing, the elementary, it's a, it's a huge day in elementary, on the 100th day of school, so that was on February 8th, just wanted to give you an idea. It's a tradition here that the kindergartners dress up as old people, so if you flip the sheet over, the little guy in the middle, I blew it up in an 8x10, like it just melted in my heart this day, so.
Yeah, looks like a shree.
It just, yeah, so everything is, it was really, really a neat thing to see, and I just, I loved to see their little faces on that day, so.
Jessica?
Yes, that's true. Those are your two cornerstone principals up in the upper left-hand corner, so, and that's, that's kind of where we're at, and just a little bit of review for you.
How much changed your Brian?
Yeah, Brian looks the same. And that tutoring program Dr. Miller was talking about is eligible for additional ADA collection, so it'll pay for itself, it, it won't be an added cost to the district with, that doesn't come with revenue to take care of it.
So I don't need a, that was just an FYI for you.
Perfect. Well, you're still up for approval of February 2022 curriculum?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask you for something on this one, so, looking at the, at the courses that we have ready for approval, again, the high school is completely done now, I'm expecting to bring you a ton of middle school stuff, I think they should be wrapping up the majority of it on our next Professional Development Day, so I'll bring another chunk to you once that done, once that is done. But I'd go ahead and ask for your, recommend your approval on the courses for board approval, please.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any questions on the list? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? And that passes seven to zero. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody have anything else they'd like to add? All right. Hearing none. Entertain a motion to adjourn. First by Troy.
Second.
Second by Kaylin, all those in favor? That passes seven to zero. Have a good night, thanks for coming out, drive safely.
And Melissa.
PD's watching.
Yeah.
Yeah.